Good evening and welcome to the June 3, 2019 meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Vice Chair Rubenstein.
Here.
Chair Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Kreske.
Here.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Here. Okay, and let's move on to salute to the flag. Commissioner Niblin, would you lead us in that?
Yes, of course, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright. Moving on to administrative business, approval of the order of agenda. Do I have a motion? Ah, Commissioner Niblin?
I'll move that we approve the order of the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second for that? Commissioner Big Stick.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Approval of minutes, there are none, so we don't have to do that. Designation of a liaison to the city council meeting, 6:10, about the 2001 Palmetto Development Agreement ordinance. Can you give us a report on that?
Sure, so the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt an ordinance that would implement the Palmetto Avenue, the parcel adjacent to 2100 Palmetto Avenue Development Agreement. And so the first reading will be heard on June 10th, and so we're looking for a liaison for that meeting.
Okay, is, let me get these off of here. Is anybody interested in being liaison for that meeting? I'm not seeing any lights. Commissioner Kreske.
Sure, I can be a liaison on that meeting.
Thank you very much for that, appreciate it. Okay, now we are on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within its subject matter jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. I repeat, that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And if you want to speak, please fill out a card and send it on up. I'm seeing a card coming forward, I don't know if it's for this or not. Apparently there is nobody that is interested in speaking at oral communications, I'm going to close that and bring it back. And move on to consent items, which there are none. And now we'll move on to the new public hearing, which is PSD 839-19, site development permit, PSD 839-19, and coastal development permit, CDP 403-19, for construction of a new two-story single-family residence on a vacant, non-conforming lot on Buckingham Way. Recommended secret action, class three exemption, and secret guideline, section 15, 303. Okay, may I have a staff report, please?
Good evening Commissioners, Helen Gannon, project planner for this proposed new single-family residence. So, the proposed project is for a new 2,383 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on a non-conforming vacant lot located on Buckingham Way. The new home will consist of four new bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, a family room kitchen, two-car garage, and some deck space. The project requires a site development permit because new construction upon a substandard lot in the R2 zoning district is being proposed, and it requires a coastal development permit because the project involves development in the coastal zone. The R2 zone allows for development of a single-family dwelling on parcels that are less than 5,800 square feet, and the project complies with all parking, landscaping, lot coverage, height, and setback requirements. Additionally, the new single-family residence will be consistent with the general plan and local coastal plan as outlined in the staff report. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed project subject to the conditions attached, and I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Big Stick.
Sure, so these questions are mostly because I'm still getting used to the process. I'd like to inform my own mind a little bit more, and I'm also encouraging others to watch these proceedings, and I'm hoping others learn along with me. So, just want to know what the logic is behind there being a minimum 5,000 square foot lot requirement.
There's nothing magic about that number. The 5,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement is a common minimum lot size throughout many communities in the area and throughout California, but I think it's really just a need to establish a particular minimum lot size that reflects a common density that is acceptable, and so the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size helps to implement the low-density residential density of the general plan, which is the most common, most common land use prescribed in the city's planning documents.
Thank you. And my other question was on packet page 14, excuse me, packet page 24, the 14th condition of approval. And again, I'm asking more, just to be able to fully understand more than anything. There's this term used, one-hour minimum rated wall required. And my question is, what does that mean, one-hour minimum rated wall?
So, this is a condition that was written by the building official, and so the one-hour rated is for fire protection, not...
Yeah, it is a minimum design standard to slow the ability of fire to spread from one structure to another. And so when a structure is located within a certain distance of a property line, the presumption is that a fire could be burning on a structure immediately adjacent to it. And so it provides, the setbacks often provide a minimum separation for fire protection, and so at the five-foot standard setback, there's no special fire protection, no fire rating required to my knowledge. But less than five feet, down to three feet, the one-hour fire rating is the residential code requirement.
The idea that that's the least amount of time it would take for fire to burn through that wall?
I think probably from a laboratory, you know, standards basis, yes, one hour is probably what the acceptable design standard is. In reality, I don't know that you can guarantee it would withstand a fire for one hour, but that's the thought process behind it.
Good, thank you. And my last question is, while I was having a conversation with the neighbor as I was looking at the lot, she raised the question of the size of the building in terms of height. I just wanted to verify the height is intended on being approximately as tall as the neighboring building, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask the applicant to come up. You will have 10 minutes to present your project.
Good evening, everybody. I am Abby Mullashiri. Today I'm here with my wife Carrie, and my two kids, Elena and Ethan, and also our architect, Nadia. I originally come from India, a southern part of India, and we used to live very close to the coast. And so when we came, when I, when we moved here, and I happened to come to the Sharp Park once, that's when I really liked this place, and it kind of looked like the place that I come from. And I am a software engineer, working for a healthcare company, and Carrie is, she's an assistant principal in a nearby high school. And so we wanted to find a place to live, and I really like the coastal area, and so then when this lot popped up, you know, we went for it, and we are trying to build a project. And because it's so narrow, just to get enough space, we had to have at least two floors to have a living space and a few bedrooms. We also want to be mindful about the neighborhood, and as, you know, you mentioned, one of our neighbors has a concern that there's not enough space, and so we're trying not to have a fence over there so that we can share the space in between both the houses. And we're also trying to not have a lot of windows to make sure that there is privacy for the, for our neighbors, just enough so that, you know, according to code, we need to have like a minimum window for the bedrooms and so on. So, in a sense, that's kind of a plan. We hope to stay here and have our kids go to school here, and, you know, if possible, you know, continue working in the community. We would love to have the opportunity to do that.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm going to then open up the public hearing. I have two cards. One is from Clara Gillis, if she would like to come up and speak. You will have three minutes.
I'm Clara Gillis, and I live at 333 Buckingham, and I'm the one that's next to the vacant lot. And it's a duplex, and I live in the back. And the only entrance I have is a sidewalk, which is 34 inches, and that sidewalk is the end of the property line. So, what I've been worried about is, say, I have to buy a new fridge or something, then how am I going to get that into my unit? And also, since you brought up the subject of fire, I didn't think of that, but that's also a good subject, that I know the building has to be built three feet from my property line. But as long as there's no fence there, and I have access to walk on that property to move furniture back and forth, I would be okay.
Okay, do you have anything else you would like to add? We can't answer any questions or make any promises from here.
No, I just want to show my concern.
Thank you very much.
And I was very pleased to hear about the windows and whatnot, because it is facing my side is my kitchen window and my dining room window. It's going to be their side of their house.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it.
All right. The next speaker is John Pan, and I have a slash and another name. I'm, I'm not clear if I'm talking to two people or one.
You're talking to one person, and it's pretty simple, it's John Paul, like the dead pope.
Okay.
You'll never forget it now.
Never.
My name is John Paul Simicaro, and thank you guys for allowing this. I live actually at 2322 Francisco Boulevard, which is the unit behind the vacant lot. And the things that I would propose are such, I've looked at the plans, they look very nice, I have to say. I wish I could afford to buy a plot of land and build. One of the things in the proposal talked about, the requirement for that lot to have a sidewalk. My, not a concern, but I guess more questions that may not be answered are, if you've looked at that street, there is no sidewalk on that side. So to make an amendment to say that that unit in particular needs to have a sidewalk, to me is a little questionable, because the only sidewalk may be on the other side. So if we're going to do a sidewalk for safety, it really should be for the whole street, which really would lead me to my next question, which would be, and I'm sorry, I have to pull these up, because I don't have the best memory. Has there been environmental impact study done? And also, has there been traffic studies done for that street for this? I am fortunate that I have a view of the pier and the ocean, and as the future builder said, that he loved coming to Sharp Park because of its beauty. So I, along with my neighbors, will be losing that view that we've grown to love. And that plot has been unconstructed for decades, so it's not as if, oh, all of a sudden, a house that's existing is going to build up. So that is a bit sad, because then those of us in the community continue to lose while others may gain. And really, how long will the construction take? And what are the construction hours? I work in surgery, I have to deal with monitoring people's brains and spinal cords, and I work crazy hours. Many of us don't work the common nine to five. So how will this impact our life for some people that rely on us to give them that life? In the end, I think we all can come to amicable decisions on it. I'm excited to see new growth in Pacifica, but also want it to stay as a charming city that we've all grown to love and live in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next speaker is Mike Magana. Magan?
My name is Mike Magan, I live at 161 Brighton Road. The only thing I wanted to mention today was the fact that this lot is completely surrounded by two-story structures. I live in the only single-story house on that block. And so I don't see why there would be any problem with getting, granting a two-story structure for this family. And I think if there was a communal setback between the two houses, one for egress and one for fire, the fire department to be able to get in and out of there in the event that there was some kind of an emergency. As according to the previous speaker about the sidewalks, if this guy gets a permit, there's definitely going to be sidewalks in front of that house, so, and a driveway and all that stuff. So all that stuff is a given, that that's all going to come through the Planning Commission, so, but I support this family, and I think they should be able to build this home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no more cards, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to go back to the applicant. You have three minutes to rebut or add to what you've already said.
Hello, my name is Nadia Pichko, I'm the architect on the project. I guess we can go one by one. First was regarding the fence and access to the property on the right side to the back unit. The owner's not planning on putting any fence further than it is existing to keep and maintain that setback and walking sidewalk to her unit, so hopefully that solves the problem with the access to the back unit. On the second item, which was the sidewalk, and that's what's something that the public work would probably, or engineering department, requires to do, so we'll follow the guidelines of the city on those items. Second story is, that was the only solution to get the square footage, since we already discussed that the lot is so narrow and small and substandard of what actually required by the city. So we did the best we could to keep the minimum distances, so they're three feet, and we actually left a little more than that, that's sufficient for the fire department to come in, and we put in one-hour rated wall to protect from fire. I believe that takes care of the items in question.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Niblin?
Actually, I did have a question from Nadia Pichko, if I could, and that was related to a question that was raised by a member of the public with respect to kind of the total amount of time that you might anticipate for the project to actually get built.
Right, so we talked to a couple contractors, right now we're estimating about six months construction time. We're also looking into the more prefabricated, like Simpson Strong Walls and C panels, which are structural insulated panels, they're prefabricated at the factory, they're better colors, and they're brought in on-site. If that, the cost of the project would be, you know, very similar to the regular conventional construction, that's the approach the owner wants to take, he wants to build it as quickly as possible. I believe the city has certain hours set up for the construction, and we're going to follow that.
Okay, so in that sort of mode of construction, talking about what I guess sort of mitigates some of the site-specific construction impacts, if those kinds of things were done?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission. What is the commission's desire on this? Do we have some discussion? Commissioner Niblin?
Just a quick question for staff, and could you remind us of the city's designated hours of construction?
Certainly, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I see none. Okay, Commissioner Niblin?
Well, I'll just go ahead and indicate that I'm in support of the project. I've had a chance to review the report and hear comments and questions from the, from the public and the architects and the project owners, sort of explanation of what they're trying to achieve. I think that this is a worthy project that I'm in support of.
Commissioner Kreske?
Yes, I agree, I am also in support of this, this project.
Okay, Commissioner Big Stick?
I was visiting the property, since it was a little thinner than a normal lot, I was reminded of some of the shotgun shacks in New Orleans, and it brought a smile to my face. The underings on my mind notwithstanding, I'm also in favor of this project.
Was it, it wasn't you?
It wasn't me, but I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Commissioner Rubenstein?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of the project, I think it's a good, you know, infill project there.
Okay, and Commissioner Berman?
I too am in favor, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Sounds fine to me. And by the way, I am also in favor of this project.
I move that the Planning Commission finds the project in exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves site development permit PSD 839-19, and coastal development permit, CDP 403-19, by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, and Commissioner Rubenstein?
Oh, I'd just like to second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Any persons, let's see, how's that go? Any, any persons who disagree with the Planning Commission's decision tonight have 10 calendar days to appeal this decision. Thank you. Get back to you. Okay, now we'll move on to the second item, which is RIA-2-18, file number 2018-036. Rent increase application, RIA-2-18, to increase rent at the Merrimont Gateway Apartment Complex to 12% of the current market rate, or the current market rate, whichever is less. May I have a staff report, please?
May I start? Chair and members of the commission, I'm Cindy Ganos, contract planner, I think some of you saw me a couple years ago when we brought this similar application forward. The project consists of 170-unit Merrimont Gateway and Summit Apartments located at 435 Gateway Drive. And because some of you weren't here the last time, I'm going to give a little project history, so bear with me. In 2008, the Planning Commission approved an application for a condominium conversion on the site, along with other entitlements, to convert the apartment units to condominiums. The final map for the units was recorded in 2014, but to date, none of the units have been sold as condominiums, and the owner continues to rent out those units. As part of the condominium conversion approval, the applicant was required to enter into an inclusionary zoning agreement and provide an affordable unit marketing program that required 26 of the, of the units be offered for sale at below-market rate, 13 at low and the other 13 at moderate. The zoning agreement, however, didn't address any rental units, it only addressed for-sale units. So the Pacifica municipal code requires that a condominium conversion, that after a condominium conversion has occurred, a tenant's rent can't increase within too much, two months of the conversion application, nor for two years from filing the conversion application or until relocation takes place. At the end of the two-year period, any increase in rent must be approved by the Planning Commission. And the intent of that code is to make sure that they're not jacking up prices and trying to get tenants to move out before they have to go through the relocation process. We are well beyond those two years, so the applicant is required to ask the Planning Commission for a rent increase. And the code outlines three things that the Planning Commission should consider when determining whether or not to approve a rent increase. Prevailing rents for similar units, the residential rent component of the Bay Area Cost of Living Index of the United States Department of Labor, and the condition of the units. In 2017, the applicant submitted an application for a rent increase requesting 25% or to-market rate, whichever was less. The Planning Commission held three public hearings and adopted Resolution 976, which authorized a rent increase of 12 and a half percent or current market rate, whichever is less. And tenants that began after the effective date of the resolution could have rents that were at-market rate if they moved in, but they couldn't have another increase without coming back to Planning Commission. And the resolution also required that tenants over the age of 62 as of 2014, or with disabilities, couldn't have their rent increased by more than 10%. And we also require, the Planning Commission also required that they establish 26 low, below-market rate rental units, since it wasn't going forward with the condo conversion for ownership, we wanted, you wanted to make sure that they established it, affordable rental units. So the applicant has noted, despite the conversion to condos, they still have no immediate intention of selling the units, and the applicant is requesting the Planning Commission consider another, another rent increase for the project. The applicant is proposing a rent increase of 12 and a half percent or to-market rate, so at least 12 and a half percent or to-market rate, which is... or to market rate, which is a little different than what was done last time. It was 12% or market rate, whichever was less. He's asking for at least 12.5% or market. So going through the three factors for consideration, the first is prevailing rents for similar units. So we prepared a rent survey, and that included research of 10 apartment developments totaling 1,110 units in the city. And based upon that, the average Merrimont rents are 35% to 40% below market rate. A spreadsheet was created, it's attachment E to your staff report, that went through each unit, what the current rent is, what the average market rent is, and what a 12.5% rent increase would total. So the spreadsheet shows that all of the units could have their rents increased by 12.5% and not reach market rate. The second factor for consideration is the residential rent component of the Bay Area Cost of Living Index, which is an odd term. The residential rent component isn't something that is spelled out, so we have to kind of interpret what that means. So we did a report for that, and so we compared it to February, so a year, February 18 to February 19. The San Francisco Consumer Price Index increased by 3.5% over that one year. Now, I can find historic Consumer Price Index going back, but what we figured was the closest component to the residential rent component that the ordinance describes is what the CPI has as rent of primary residents. And that data is only available back to 2014. So if, it has increased 34.2% or an average of 5.7% a year since 2014. So if we assume that since 2008, when the project was converted to condos, it would be a 62.7% increase. So since 2008, the applicant has only raised rents 12.5%. So even adding 12.5, it still would be low, be below that rent of primary residence component of the Consumer Price Index. That's a lot of numbers and a lot of confusing terminology, so I apologize for that. And if you have questions, we can work through it. The third factor to consider is the condition of the units. San Mateo County Health Department conducts inspections of apartment units throughout the county, and we contacted them to see if there has been any recent inspections. And they did an inspection in 2015 and 2017, and they haven't done any since we met last time to discuss the rent increases. So they said that they usually do annual, they usually do inspections every four years. And on their last report, they didn't find, the last three inspections, they've noticed substantial improvement in the condition. Considering removing it from the need for annual inspections and moving it back to every four years. And they have not done additional inspections. So the applicant, however, has been more proactive in their management of the units and the condition of the units. They're making inspections and noting maintenance items, and as of the date of writing the staff report, I hadn't heard any complaints about the conditions of the units. I just want to briefly talk about the below-market-rate units. As required in the ordinance, the applicant entered into a contract with a consultant to manage the 26 below-market-rate units. The staff report walks through the current income and rent limits and all of that for the 13 low and 13 moderate income units. But the affordability compliance consultant that is under contract will be responsible for ensuring that the rents don't exceed the maximum limits set by the HUD guidelines for that. And they will also be responsible for making sure the tenants are income-qualified and maintain that income criteria. Staff also has reviewed the project and believes that planning commission can find it qualifies for a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. So as outlined in the staff report, staff recommends commission find the minimum requirements for a rent increase have been met and adopt the resolution for the staff report. The resolution, among other thing, notes the increase is approved at 12.5% or market rate, whichever is less, which is consistent with what the planning commission found last time, while the applicant requests at least 12.5% or market rate. The applicant submitted a letter, which you have been provided, that outlines three alternatives. One is to increase to market on the anniversary of each tenant's agreement. The second is to grant a 12.5% increase now and then allow an increase of 10% every year without returning back to planning commission. And the third is to allow greater than 12.5% number to be chosen by commission. And I'm sure the applicant will discuss those options further with you. In addition, you've received two other comments from tenants of the apartment complex in writing. So staff and I, given that, staff and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Commissioner Bigstick, I believe you were first.
I have so many questions. Good evening. So first of all, these, you went out of the way. When in 2017, there was an application for the 12.5 raise, the applicant raised the rent 12.5% at that time, yeah?
Correct.
Okay, so you were going over the numbers a moment ago and, and I'm asking more foundational questions so I can fully understand, but while we're playing with numbers for a moment, unpack a page 88. There's that list of the 170 units, and specifically, the below-market-rate units were highlighted. When I came to unit number 134, like the rest of them, the math made sense to me within the context of what was being explained in the report, but when I came to number 134, if my understanding was correct, the 2,600 is what is currently being paid, the 3,298 is what market rate would be, and the 2,925 is what is being proposed to raise it to. The rest of them, within the context of what we're discussing and the numbers suggested, looked fine to me. But I was wondering about that particular unit, whether or not that would be capped at the 80%, because when I brought out a calculator, it looked like 80% of the fair rate listed here would be about 2,638, which is not much more than what it already is at. So I was just wondering if, how that winds up getting factored later.
That will be the responsibility of the affordable compliance consultant to confirm that, but that one is right on the edge. There's a lot of factors that go into what's allowed by HUD, and it includes utilities, and the rent rule that we have doesn't include utilities. So this just kind of gives you a general picture, and the affordability consultant will have all the details of each unit and each household and make sure that it doesn't exceed.
And generally, it all seemed consistent except for that one. So if I'm understanding it correctly, then this is the proposal, and if it were to get to that point, then the consultant would come in and say, hey, this one looks like it's a little too much. Can you bring that one down for that particular unit? Is that about how that would work?
Correct. What you would be saying tonight is, if you adopted the resolution, you would be saying that we're approving up to a 12.5% rent increase. And it could either go to market or to whatever the HUD limits are, whatever is the applicable HUD limit.
So that being out of the way, now I need to start learning about the basics, and if you could help me through that for a moment, I'd be most grateful. First of all, the term condominium conversion. As I was reading through it, what occurred to me was, there was a condominium conversion that didn't necessarily mean that there was actually any change to the physical environment of any of the units. Is that accurate? Does that just mean that he's able to sell it at that point once the conversion's made? Or does it require a physical change?
It depends on how the units were constructed. To sell them as condominiums, they have to have firewalls, that you learned about earlier, and there has to be certain improvements made to the building. And they went through that process, if I remember, two years ago. We looked that all up, and they had all their building permits when the map was final. That actually did the physical conversion.
I would need to verify that.
I'm going to jump in here for a second. One of the things they would have to do for the, to actually sell the individual units is to have individual gas and electric meters for each unit, and that's, that has not taken place at this point in time.
I don't recall.
So my next question, in 2017, why did it take three separate meetings to come up with the resolution that eventually was approved?
Because the, we had heard nothing about the condition of the units, and when the residents came up, they were complaining about the condition of the units. And we went through several meetings, and some commissioners went out and toured, and we had, so we went through the process to really nail down what the conditions of the units were.
So all of the below-market-rate apartments are not currently occupied. Are the rest of the units currently occupied?
Not according to the rent rule that provided. You can see, if you look down, there are vacant lists on page 87 and 88, so there are several vacant.
And then, I think my final question. Oh, I see why. So I'm not sure if this is a better question for the applicant or not, but is there a logic behind doing a condominium conversion? I mean, first of all, now I'm confused whether or not the physical requirement for a condominium conversion has taken place, so perhaps that'll get answered before the evening's through. But then, what's the logic behind going through a condominium conversion if the intention isn't to sell the units as condominium sooner than later?
Best for the applicant to answer. I can try and recall his answer last time, and I think it was the market, or the applicant is best to answer that question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Nivlin?
Thank you. Just a few questions, and these, I think to some extent, maybe dovetail a little bit. And I was wondering, I take it there's no particular time limit on the actual carrying out of a condominium conversion, once you've gotten a, you know, an approval for that, for that kind of, an application? You can just sort of sit around indefinitely forever, until you decide it's advantageous to actually start selling units?
That's correct. I'm not aware of any prescribed time limit for sale of the units, once the condominium subdivision has been approved and recorded.
Thank you. The other thing that, you know, I probably should remember from the last time we discussed this, but it's fuzzy now, and I was hoping to get an understanding of how sort of relocation benefits or the relocation process, you know, fits in the context of all this, because I'm understanding that this sort of rent application, or this application process to increase rent sort of works in tandem with relocation, the relocation process, and ensuring that folks are able to avail themselves of, you know, whatever protections or benefits exist in the relocation process. And I was hoping to get a little bit of a refresher on that.
On the relocation process, or?
Yeah, and again, I don't need a, it doesn't have to be at length, but are there relocation benefits that are available under certain circumstances? Is that what we're trying to protect in the context of what we're doing here?
Well, so there are, the, as Cindy explained, the reason for this, the planning commission approval is that, to help prevent pushing out of tenants and controlling it that way and not pushing out that type of relocation. But there are other relocation benefits in terms of if there is a market-rate tenant in a BMR-designated unit, they have the ability to receive relocation funds to find a new unit to occupy. Or they can choose to stay in the BMR unit, pay full market rate, and the difference would go towards a city affordable housing and loop fund.
So if the owner were to decide that they wanted to sell condominiums at a certain point, and assume arguendo that they had checked all the blocks that they needed to actually be entitled to sell a condominium unit, and there's a tenant in that unit, presumably, the owner would have to wait until the end of a particular lease term to actually sell. I'm gathering that. Are there any other benefits that would be available to a tenant under those circumstances?
So, so under the ordinance, there's various tenant protections. So there's moving expenses and relocation assistance. Some of them are qualified by a period of time prior or after the tentative map approval, which has been quite a while. But there, the ordinance speaks to relocation assistance, excuse me, moving expenses, special cases, and where you have a non-purchasing tenant that's 62 or older.
Okay, I think I'm tracking, and I guess what I was trying to get at is sort of the notion of, the reason that this rent protection is in there is to ensure that people aren't sort of pushed out owing to undue rent, thereby not being able to avail themselves of those protections you were just talking about.
Correct.
Okay. Another question I had, then, was related to the tenant over age 62 and tenants with disabilities. And I'm looking at packet page 33 in particular, and I was trying to understand the reference to August 14, 2014. This is the applicant's request, and I guess it actually finds itself reflected in the draft resolution as well. And I was curious about the significance of that date. It doesn't really track the map or the recording of the map. I was just curious as to where the 14th of August of 2014 comes from.
I was under the impression that was the date of the map recording.
Well, maybe it is. It just looked like the staff report made reference to August 22, 2014, being the date of the recording of the map. And I'm just reading from page 32 there, so. And it's in the first paragraph, about five or six lines down, so I just, again, it doesn't have to be answered this minute, but I was sort of curious about the origins of that date.
That could have just been an error.
Okay.
Could need to be 22 instead of 14.
All right. I guess that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Bigstick?
Assuming the conversions take in place the way it's supposed to, the owner can just sell it unit by unit? They don't need to sell units all at once? Or, I'm asking because my suggestion is, there's vacancies now. If the conversions take in place the way it's supposed to have, and the owner wants to sell one of those vacant units, since there's no tenant there, that should be a relatively simple matter, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, it might be a good time to clarify. So from the research that was done at the last hearing on rent increases, what was determined is that, the way the code reads, is that the physical improvements needed to meet the functional standards of a condo are required to be met prior to sale of condominium. So that is why we are in this situation here, where we have a map recorded, but not all of the functional improvements have been completed.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Bigstick, again?
Then the question immediately occurs to me, is it possible to make those improvements before a tenant has moved out?
I couldn't say that. I don't know how disruptive some of these improvements would need to be and what they have left to do, essentially.
It's certainly on one of the condos that are vacant, or one of the apartments that are vacant, it would be, in theory, a relatively simple matter to make the improvements on those, and then sell those while there's still renters and other units, right?
Again, I think that would take more study, because some of the improvements are Again, I think that would take more study, because some of the improvements are, as was mentioned, individual meters, individual water heaters, and I don't know that that's very simple to do on a unit-by-unit basis.
I visited the area earlier, and so I understand that there's kind of these various buildings, clumps of apartments, so what you're suggesting is it might be that one of the fullness of those little buildings would have to be vacated, possibly, before some of those improvements could occur.
That, that would be more probable, is to do it building by building, rather than unit by unit.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm not seeing any lights for a minute, so I have a couple of questions. I get a chance, yay! First, Tina, you were going through the protections earlier, how many of them are still in effect? Because there has been a great deal of time since the original condo conversion was approved. Yeah, it was all based on two years, originally, if I remember right.
It looks like the moving expenses do, does not have the time qualifier. Relocation assistance is the one that is, it says it should be provided for a minimum period of four months following the tentative map approval, so that one's probably timed Any, any of the special case protections regarding tenants 62 or older appear to still be there. The tentative map's been approved for a while.
Right, so it's expired, right?
Yeah, yeah, so really, it's the, it's the moving expenses that look like in the special case, that are still operative.
Is still operative, or not?
Still operative.
Is still operative, okay. Thank you very much for that, I needed that. And, back to you. I still have questions. Earlier, when you started your presentation, you said something to the effect of, it was, that what was being asked for was 12% or market rate, not 12%, 12.5% or market rate, whichever is lower. And I, what I was reading was, it was whichever is, is lower.
That is staff's, and, and what we put in the recommendation and the resolution. The applicant has asked for at least 12.5% or market rate.
I see, there's, the change is, is coming, is a request from the applicant.
Yes, the request from the applicant is at least 12.5%, but no higher than market rate. And based upon Planning Commission's action last time, I continued forward in the staff report with 12.5% or market rate, whichever is less.
Thank you very much for that. There was a little bit of confusion in my head when you said that. Anybody else have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to have the applicant come on up and present. You'll have 10 minutes, sir.
Good evening, Chair Clifford and members of the commission, we're back again, a year, a little over a year later. I'm going to try and answer a couple of the questions, because I think it needs to frame the rent increase. Condominium is a form of ownership, ownership of real property. It is also a form of operating of buildings. That's why the original application, back in 2008, was for a subdivision map for the condominium form of ownership, and a conditional use permit for the operation of a condominium on this property. Not, not one certificate of occupancy has been issued, therefore, not one final inspection from the building department has been completed. We have a building which is owned, has separate units that are owned, but it is essentially still operated as a rental facility, although we have a conditional use permit, vested conditional use permit, that upon certain conditions, we can then sell the units and operate it as an independent condominium. Some of those conditions are obtaining certificates of occupancy on each of the units. Since 1118, we would have to have separately metered water, and all those sorts of things. So in order for us to sell units, we're going to have to do those things at some point in time. So, that's, that's the framework. What is interesting, and why we're here, is on this rental increase, not one tenant has been displaced, not one tenant has been evicted from this project, it has gone on the way it did for many, many years. It is a large project, it's 171 units, and what we are asking for, and I thought I made this clear in my application, and why I wrote the letter to you just the other day, is that our application is for a minimum of 12.5%. That only gets us to where we should have been the last time around. And we didn't get past that the last time around, because of these questions about the condition of the property, which, as Ms. Goss and everyone has said, the, the ownership has been very proactive, the property is much improved, et cetera. So, we are looking for a minimum to get us where we thought we should be at the last instance. One of the reasons that when I do an application like this, I don't come in and say, "We want X number of dollars for a one-bedroom, X number of dollars for a two-bedroom," is because frankly, when I made the application, this application was made on April 3rd of 2018, today is 14 months later. Rents have gone up, so I couldn't ask you for a specific amount of money in my application, because here we are. Why the city takes over a year to process the application, I don't know. Where are we rent-wise? We are significantly below-market on everything. If you look in your document, and you look at the below-market rate for median income units, many of our market-rate units are actually below the allowable below-market rate ceiling. We are asking for a significant increase, because we haven't really had much of an increase since 2008. We've had a 12% increase since 2008, when market rates have gone up 67%. So, we think that this application should be a minimum of 12.5%, and my suggestion, as I pointed out in my letter, is that I think we should go to the weighted average for units in Pacifica. Not the high end, not the low end, but the weighted average, and they are included in the report that Ms. Goss did, and did a bang-up job, as she did last time around as well. It's packet page 171, and table 3, and I think those are the appropriate numbers for, for this application, it gets us close to being market rate. Lastly, and then I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have, is that we have entered into a below-market rate agreement with HIP Housing, that's Human Investment Project, a local nonprofit developer company, and they are managing all the below-market rate units. We don't really have anything to say about that. We are more than happy to continue with the 62 and disabled rent stabilization measures. The only thing that we are requesting tonight, that is other than what's in the ordinance, is the rent increase. And the ordinance needs to be amended for whatever number that you, in your discretion, decide is the appropriate number. In closing, what I would like to say is that the ordinance, the law, issues three criteria for your determination. One is what the market rate is, one is what the consumer price index is, and one is what the condition of the property is. Consumer price index is, is a number, as Ms. Goss has pointed out, the number for the market rate in Pacifica is significantly higher even than the CPI number, and the condition of the property is significantly improved over the last time we were here. I think that warrants factually a increase of more than 12.5%. We would like to get to the weighted average, and I think you can look at that, if you want to crunch numbers, that's fine, but I think the weighted average is the right place to be. With that, I've got 3 minutes and 41 seconds, which I'll be happy to yield back to the commission for questions.
Okay, Commissioner Big Stick?
Sure, good evening, and thank you for being here. Getting back to my questions about what it means to be a condominium. So, was your intention to sell these as condominiums?
I did not do the conversion in 2008, I only came in around 2015, 16, and what I will tell you this, is that this project is owned by two separate LLCs, which have multiple shareholders. And to my knowledge, there has not been a majority vote of the shareholders to put these units up for sale, and I don't believe there will be any time in the near future. In 40 years of doing land use law, the most prevalent reason that I see for doing condominium conversions is estate planning. Somebody has a 21-unit building, and they have three kids, and rather than force the sale of the building to have one child buy out the other, or whatever it is, they can divide it up and give seven to each of their kids. That, shockingly, happens more often than not. That's what, that's, condominium conversions are rare in San Mateo County.
So the reason for doing this might have just been flexibility for the future?
I believe that, that's ultimately it. I believe among the individual shareholders, there may be some tax considerations and things like that as well.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Berman?
A few questions, mainly for context. So, in their staff report, I noticed that there's quite a few vacant units. It looks like the Pacifica average is 2.7. It came out to about 14% vacancy for the, the normal market rate units. Is there, do you happen to know, I don't know if you're the, the management?
Part of that is that some of the units are being refurbished as they go along. Over the time between 2008 and 2017, when we had no rent increases at all, there was a little bit of deferred maintenance. Then there are normal turnovers of rent. It, it is a little higher, I would, vacancy is, is a, it's a snapshot, it may not be the same picture every, every day. And that's what this shows, is what it was at the time that we looked at the report. In general, about 10% of the units turnover annually, so on 171-unit project, that's about 17 units that turn over on an annual basis. And where you are in that timeframe, you may have a, two or three units that are vacant for a couple of months while they're being refurbished. So it, it's a little higher, but generally, the county average is, is what it is, you know?
Okay, mainly asking because I just wanted to make sure that there's still people trying to rent at the current rate, and just kind of a spot check of current rate-wise, is it already too expensive? I know rent in the area is very expensive, so thank you, I just wanted context.
I have grown children, I know how bad the rent is.
I think you already answered some of my questions, which were Commissioner Big Stick's questions, so, thank you.
Commissioner Nivlin?
Actually, I just wanted to make sure I understood, I think Commissioner Berman asked a question, I just, a very good question, I just wanted to dovetail on it and make sure I understood. There are a number of vacant units, and I'm gathering that there must have been some leases that have been entered into relatively recently, and I don't think anything in the existing resolution would prevent the, the property owners from charging current market rents. I'm curious about what the current market rents are, you know, with respect to leases that have been entered into in the last, oh, I don't know, a couple of months. Are they coming in at 2914, or at 3298, or, you know, whatever the current weighted average is?
Well, the, the rent roll, like everything else, is a snapshot.
That I got.
Okay, and I'm sure that if there are rents, that, units that became available that were re-rented at market price, they, they would be higher, yes.
Okay, so, in the, the last couple of months, are rents that are, leases that are being entered into at those rates? I guess that was my specific question.
Yes, the, the, the real issue is, we, we have some tenants that have been there a long time, and they are 60% below-market.
Yeah, that I was, I was tracking you saying that, I just was curious about the extent to which this current, this property is actually charging those rents that we're talking about here as being the current weighted average rents.
Yeah, and you got to remember, too, is that in 19, 19, 2017, when we got the rent increase, people came in, they got to market. We can't raise their rent two, three, four years out without your permission.
But somebody who rented today, you could charge market, too?
Could be, charge market, but we can't raise their rent if they stay two, three, four years without your permission.
That I understood, okay.
It, it, this kind of thing is generally not the thing that planning commissions do, but, you know, God bless you for trying.
Thanks.
I'm going to jump in with a question of my own. We've talked, and talked about leases, do you actually have leases, or is it month-to-month?
I, I believe it's all one year, it's, our standard is one-year lease, yes.
One-year lease, and, and it's renewed for a year when that time is up?
It can be, or it just goes month-to-month at that juncture, but we can't raise the rent month-to-month without your permission.
Right, but in terms of an actual document that says that these people are entitled to live there for a year?
Yes.
It's, it happens once, and then it goes month-to-month?
It, it, my understanding is, is if the tenant comes and says they want to re-up for another year, that's fine. If, if they just say, "Oh, you know, maybe I'll stay another six months," well, month-to-month is fine.
Is, that's your understanding, or that's what is actually happening?
One-year lease, month-to-month. Nobody asks for another lease? No.
Okay, so it's, it's one year, and then it becomes month-to-month?
Correct.
Period. Thank you for that. I wanted to clarify, because I didn't want the conception to be that there was an unending line of leases happening. Okay.
That, that's only for people that were 62 or older on August 14th, 2014, or are, or were disabled on that day.
Okay.
They, they have a perpetual right to stay.
That's, that's correct. I, I am also, my question around vacancies of the below-market rate units seems to be very high, it's 32%, 32.5%. Is there a reason why the below-market rate units are so heavily weighed towards being vacant?
I, I don't know that for sure, because that is totally managed by HIP Housing. As, I've been doing this a while, and I will tell you that one of the problems with inclusionary housing is finding people that qualify, especially in the moderate range. I'll give you one example, we did a project in East Palo Alto several years ago, and we had a three-bedroom unit that was in the BMR program, and the city could not find someone that could qualify income-wise for the three-bedroom unit. So, I, I'm sure there's some of that. Also, part of that, I think, is that HIP had the problem, when they took over the contract, that there were people living in the, in, in units that were designated as BMR, but they did not qualify so, to be in a BMR unit. And the question is, what do we do with those people at that point in time? And if we had another- And if we had another equivalent unit, we offered it to them, but we didn't force them to take an equivalent unit.
And do you have any idea if, in terms of not qualifying for it, is it that people are making too much money or they simply don't make enough that they qualify for the 80% of income?
Well, again, I can't speak to exactly the units in this project, but my general experience is, is that people either make too much money or they make too little money.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. And I think I'm going to move to Commissioner Big Stick again.
I had a question. The term was used, use permit, and I was just wondering how much that use permit lasts. I think it was within the context of a condominium use permit. I wrote down a note. It seemed important, but I wanted to follow up on it in case it makes sense to anyone.
The conditional use permit to operate the structure as a condominium is fully vested.
So that's, there's no limit on how long that lasts, period? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Berman?
Kind of touching off of Commissioner Clifford, Chair Clifford's questions. For the BMR units, so it does sound like there's a high amount that are vacant. And for the case where people don't make enough, so then what is roughly, what's the vacancy between the 80% AMI and the 120% AMI? So like which one is more of the vacant one for this complex?
Let me get an answer to that.
Okay.
There are no vacant BMRs in the building today.
Okay.
Okay. Certainly different from what we've got in our report.
Yeah. Well, that's what I said. It's like when I filed the application in April of 2018, it's not the same picture as it is today.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
When do you guys usually experience the most turnaround with tenants? So perhaps at the end of the spring when students might be leaving or, because I mean, that could very well apply for when this, when the staff report was written in context with the rest of the year?
I can ask, but generally in real estate, you see apartments turn over generally in the summer. You don't see apartments turn over very, very frequently in December.
Okay.
From years, March and November.
Are they turn over months? March and November.
March and November.
That's Guena Ponte, who's our resident manager.
Thank you. Sorry, very specific questions. One more specific question, I'm sorry again, but it really helps me understand. How many residents do you have or tenants do you have that have lived there for, let's say, over four years? Just like ballpark?
Probably half.
Half? Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll calendar seeing you in about 14 months.
Well, you'll probably be called up in a little, little bit later. The public gets to speak, and then you still have another three minutes.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm now going to open this up to the public to speak. My first speaker is John Keener.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. Good to see all of you. I'm John Keener of Flynn Damar. And just so you know where I'm going, I'm going to recommend an inspection by an appointed subcommittee of the Planning Commission, as was done two years ago before deliberating on a rent increase for this property. Two years ago, several tenants testified as to the rundown nature of the buildings and their units. Complaints included non-working appliances, plumbing issues, rats and vermin, moldy washing machines, drywall coming off around the windows, and mold on the walls and around the windows. The inspection of the premises and two units by Commissioners Clifford and Behringer showed that from the outside, the property looked rundown. Parking lots weren't striped and the asphalt wasn't breaking up. The ceiling of the garages was not to fire code with apartments above. So this was a serious issue. There appeared to be no seismic retrofits. The electrical panels were heavily rusted and there was conduit draped across the bottom of the buildings. In the units, there was mold damage and leaky faucets. A rat trap was seen confirming rodent problems, rotting kitchen countertops, cupboard doors sagging onto one another. So two units were inspected, but letters and oral testimony confirmed that other units had similar problems. So is a rent increase justified based on the condition of the units? Comparison of the rent of, the rents to the other apartment complexes in good repair might not be appropriate. So I would recommend inspection by a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, possibly accompanied by city and county inspectors and a fire inspector. And I would further recommend that the applicant be required to provide receipts showing the claimed improvements over the last two years. Obviously, this would necessitate to bringing this rent increase back to the Planning Commission at a later date. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. My next speaker is Ann Gleason.
I've done this before, so pardon my nerves.
Pull the mic to you, that will help us hear you. Pull the mic towards you and that will help us.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm in one of those BMR units. I turned 70. I do have disabilities, but I'm a little concerned with rent increase because I'm retired and on a fixed income. So it's kind of cost of housing, cost of living are going up. People are gearing to leave the state of California, and it's cited as about 57% over the next year and a half. And I took the time to speak to a couple of people who were managers for U-Hauls, and they can't replace them. They have to go get other peoples because people are moving. They're leaving. Where does that leave the rest of us as far as cost of living and cost of housing? Basically food for thought regarding the rent increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My next speaker is Carolyn Jarmillo, I think, and I'm probably murdering that, but I know that Carolyn is correct.
Good evening. It's Amel, but that's close enough.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate what John Keener just said, that I too feel that a run increase should not happen until there is another inspection and that the building and all the units have been completely inspected and are satisfactory to the tenants. Also, I know you've heard a lot of numbers tonight, and recently I read an article that researchers were writing in an article for the Journal of Urban Affairs, and the title of the article is "New Perspectives on Community Level Determinants of Homelessness." And the researchers found that $100 increase in monthly rent in big cities was associated with a rise of 15% in homelessness. And that that connection, that rise in homelessness is even worse in smaller cities. So I think that's something that every city planning commission needs to put into their consideration when they're talking about raising rents. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Gloria Stefan, Stofan, Stofan.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. I too had a lot of questions, and I'm glad that the Commissioners were able to get some answers and at the same time have the guts to ask the applicant. I was concerned about the high vacancy, particularly with the BMR units, and I'm glad to hear that they're filled. But I do have a concern about the, and if I understand correctly, I remember reading in the Tribune several years ago complaints about the conditions of the units. I would like to see some type of recent or current inspections, particularly from the Fire Department. My husband was in the Pacifica Fire Department, and it would be, I think, important to have something like that done again. I also had, what's going on? We're converting to condos, and condominiums mean ownership. I understand that. But it seems like this can go on for a long time, and I feel those apartments are like a cash cow. I'm sorry, but that just really upsets me because in this day and age, we're trying to get people off of the street and out of their cars to find affordable housing or affordable living in this Bay Area, and here we are, asking for higher rents. And the owner has every right to ask for that, but it's getting ridiculous, and I just wanted to give my two cents. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Jamie Brunker? I got it. Brunker.
Yes, my name is Jamie Brunker. I do live at the apartments. I have been so thankful that there hasn't been rent increases. As a single mother, it's extremely hard to make ends meet. And if I had to pay market rents at this point, I would have to leave the state. Sorry. I understand that you're in business to make money, and you don't rent an apartment unit not to make money, but there are so many units out there that they have recently rented that are at market value. And it's just, we went through a 12.5% increase last year, and so me not getting a raise, there is absolutely no way I can afford to pay more rent at this point. So that's why I decided to come and stand and talk to you, so thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Whitaker?
I would like to provide documentation for the Commissioners.
Yeah. We'll take it though.
My name is Wanda Whitaker, and I live in the Gateway Apartments. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you on this critical issue this evening. I'm here tonight to ask that you deny this request for an increase or at minimum delay it for at least 12 to 18 months. Your subcommittee found a number of deferred maintenance issues. These maintenance issues, however, are not mentioned in tonight's package as addressed. I can tell you for a fact that no seismic upgrades have been done. In 2008, approval determined that tenants over the age of 62 on August 22nd, 2014 would not have their rent increased more than 10%. I am now 64 and face the exorbitant percentage increases this commission sought to protect the senior and disabled community from experiencing. Only about 20% of 34 units are long-term tenants who would be eligible for relocation costs when the conversion takes place. However, rate increases negatively impact long-term tenants and appear to be strategic. It will displace long-term tenants and allow them to avoid paying relocation costs. I hope the commission will look closely at this to ensure the process is not being exploited for the sake of profits. The 2017 package provided an occupancy report showing how long tenants were in their units and vacant units. However, the current documentation doesn't provide this information. The BMR units shown in tonight's package are mostly vacant units, and now I find that they're not. Okay. I think these units were arbitrarily selected. We need to know how and why these units were selected, and as a senior in Social Security, prior to the designation of BMR units, I should have been notified of the opportunity to apply, and/or my unit should have been designated. This would also be a way to mitigate the impact of increases to tenants who turn 62 after, after August 24, 2014. The commission discussed when management might come back for another rental increase, and the director said she would be comfortable with three years. I think a decision should not be made before 2020. Please withhold your decision until the deferred maintenance observed, observed by your subcommittee is addressed and the 2017 occupancy charts are compared. In July 2017, Mr. Haslop stated that a sense of inherent fairness was a missing criteria. I completely agree. And the cost of labor and materials is so much higher now than it was 10 years ago, management deferred maintenance because the soft market did not best serve them. Now they want increases claiming the cost of maintenance. This is certainly a demonstration of the lack of inherent fairness to the tenants. Please, Commissioners, hold them to a higher standard of ownership and deny this increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My next speaker, and this is my last card, so if anybody else wants to speak, please fill out a card, is Ellen Hager, Hague.
My name's Ellen Hague. I'm a resident of Pacifica, a homeowner and a member of Faith in Action Bay Area. And I am in total agreement with the previous speakers. As you can tell, there's a human cost to what's going on here. The real estate market currently doesn't seem to care about people. And so I'm concerned about the tenants being displaced because of these rent increases, particularly for the BMR units. And also, before any increases are even considered, there should be some of the required inspections before going forward. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Looks like I'm getting some more cards. David Fada?
Good evening, and thank you for seeing us and for allowing me to give us a quick and small presentation. As a tenant, has been in here for six years, I can verify a lot of what my fellow tenants have said. I do highly recommend that an inspection from your subcommittee be conducted around the apartment building. As I've lived for six years, I have literally have watched parts of the apartment slowly degrade, decompose, and fall apart. I have had numerous times, whenever I requested things be fixed, be hit with annoying, consistent paper walls saying, hey, you got to fill this out. I fill them out, they don't get done. I have watched my apartment, the back railing of it has literally rotted internally and fallen off. And I have gone to them since then times, hey, this is broken, this is broken, this is broken. I have bad airflow in my bathroom. from a fan that I have, on repeated times, gone to their maintenance crew and asked them to have them fixed. Also, the improvements that they have made, although appreciated, really don't improve the quality of life majority of the tenants. I don't need a heated pool, all right? I need better washing machines, I need better dryers that actually will wash my clothes and not just spit water on them and throw them back out partially clean. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And my final speaker is Teresa. I'm not even going to attempt, Teresa. I'm sorry. Please, please tell me who you are.
Certainly. Good evening. I'm Teresa Talibas, and I've lived in the apartments for over 15 years. I was here in 2017, and we're talking about very similar things in 2017 that haven't, I don't think, been resolved. I think there have been proactive things that have been done. I'm very much in support of Gwen because she has been trying, but I think, you know, the ownership is just not stepping up to, again, improve the quality of life, as the gentleman has just said before me. I agree with Mr. Keener. If we could have another inspection through my voice and again there, to get everyone to be on board is to see what is it, market rate, quality? I will be honest and say that mine was one of the apartments that you guys came and took a look at. So I think it's fair, if you look at it beforehand, make a decision, and that you look at it again and make your decision then. But again, I think you should weigh the percentage of increase versus the quality of the unit.
Thank you very much. My next card is, I believe it's Juan Tup. Did I get that right, sir?
The last name could be Trup or Trapp. And I received this notice of public hearing and that states, you know, anyone interested may appear. And that's the main reason I came. I am anyone. I live around here, and I could agree with the people that is stating in front of you, meaning or expressing them, you know, emotions. But to me, it's very clear that the rate increase, and you need to compare apples with apples and oranges with oranges. And it looks like, in a free market, you could ask whatever you want. But I know the area, I know the location of this place, and definitely the value of what they are asking is not comparing to the situation of the existing premises. So that's not nothing emotional, it's just reality. I don't see the requesting of the increase being tangible, being something that you could see there. So I just came, and I wanted to be part of what was stated here. So that's my opinion.
Thank you very much, sir. That was my last card. So, and I see nobody else moving, so I'm going to call the applicant back up. You will have three minutes to restate your case, or rebut, or however you would like to use it. No dancing.
Either going to rebut or waive it. Thank you, Mr. Clifford and the commission. Nobody wants their rents raised. Nobody wants... But in order to continue to make improvements at the property, we can't continue to operate with revenues on many of these units that go back to 2008. That's just plain and simple. The question of the inspection, we were asked by staff to provide them with information concerning the annual inspections that we do, the number and time it took to have requests for service handled. We provided all that information. We provided our books and records showing the amount of money that was spent on repairs, maintenance, and improvements since the last application. If somebody at staff level had thought that an inspection by somebody else was required, we certainly would have permitted that. There's no problem with that. We believe that the project is in significantly better condition than it was in 2017, and increases in rents will allow us to continue to manage this. The...I really don't want to get into some of the issues, but inherent fairness means fairness to all parties, and that includes the landlord. And granted, it's not real...it's not real politic these days to think of landlords as needing fairness. But just in closing...
You've got another minute.
All right. Just in closing, I think one of the interesting things is, where would these tenants be today if they hadn't done the condo conversion in 2008? They would have, these units, in whatever condition they would be in, would be at market rate today. And these tenants have had the benefit of the conversion ordinance restrictions for a number of years. And we're not asking for those restrictions to be removed. If they ever decide to sell, there are going to be rental assistance, there's going to be moving expenses, and all the items and the notices that are required by both state and municipal law. So I think that's the real key element, is that maybe these guys made a mistake by converting to a condo. They wouldn't be there where they are right now. And the benefit of that mistake rests with the current tenants.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant, anybody? Okay. I'm going to bring this back to, close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Bigstick.
Sure. So first of all, as to the subject of relocation benefits, I didn't see it in the staff report, so I'm curious about it. It's not going to factor into my decision-making tonight, I think, but I'm interested to know exactly what those relocation benefits are. The other thing that wasn't in the staff report, presumably because it's at the discretion of commission, more than the purview of staff to direct it, is this idea of doing a review of, or excuse me, an inspection of what the units look like. Something that wasn't in the report was, I think, the list of what needed to be fixed, the list of what has been fixed since then. When I was looking at the, from the outside the units earlier today, I was looking at them, they looked nice, like maybe recently had been painted. But then again, it looked like maybe the wind had had its effect on them, and then that immediately triggered in my mind, okay, what does the inside look like? And I'd absolutely be interested in continuing this until I know what the condition of the units are, because from what I have in front of me so far, I don't think I have that data. A report from two years ago is good, but that doesn't necessarily tell me today. If I had had the report from 14 months, I want to know what the condition looks like. And I am interested in a continuance from that perspective. After that, speaking personally, this is a little bit of a foreign world to me. When I was looking at the various income categories, I personally qualify as very low. I cannot live in one of these units, not for a lack of working 40 hours a week on top of trying to be as engaged in the community as I can be. And this is difficult, because on the one hand, if you've taken the time to become a landowner, absolutely, there's a construct there that you should have your due. But on the other hand, especially in this time and place, in this area, where the term housing crisis is the term that is constantly being used, immediately there is a question about what fair is starting to mean as we go forward. And in my experience, not renting from a multiple-unit place, but a single-family residence, where we took the opportunity to have a good relationship with our landlord, and the landlord cultivated a good relationship with us, it's very much a one-on-one relationship. So to come into the mindset of dealing with 170 residences, and the idea that we have to figure out a way to do this that's fair for all, when there's not necessarily the opportunity for the land ownership to cultivate that relationship and be able to determine what's fair from a personal level, and think in terms of the human being behind the bill, it's frustrating, it's hard. And what I can say is, while I fully respect the numbers in front of me and that they present some degree of fairness on the one hand, on the other hand, I'd at least like to be sure of the state of these units and do that subcommittee inspection thing before going forward, so that I can be sure that, before figuring out if the 12.5% is fair at this moment in time, I know for certain at least what the customers are getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Well, having voted on this in 2008, I didn't expect to continue doing this back then. It seemed that condo conversions were a little bit more imminent at that time. Since we have a stated problem of inability to make improvements without a rate increase, I think it would be interesting to get more data, maybe some more evidence of that inability. And it looks like maybe some of it was provided. I'm not sure, or maybe I didn't digest it in what was provided, maybe make it more easily digestible to this commissioner. But since we did do a, kind of a, subcommittee inspection once before, I could be convinced to maybe do something like that again, generally, at least in my line of business, when we identify a problem, our inspectors identify an issue or a problem, we always have a follow-up inspection to demonstrate that things have been brought into compliance. It's just kind of a way to verify. So I'd be curious what my other, my fellow commissioners think about that, but I could be interested in continuing this until we get a subcommittee finding. Leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman.
I agree with Commissioner Bigstick and Commissioner Campbell. I think, given especially that one of the criteria for rent increase is to understand the condition of the units, it would be helpful for the planning commission to understand what the condition of the units are at present. Question, just for consideration for the planning department, maybe in the future, could it be considered to make an inspection part of the approval process for rent control? I don't know if that could be considered in the future, for future situations. I'm sure this is going to be ongoing for apartment complexes in Pacifica years to come. So I don't know if that's possible. It could be a benefit to the city and the residents, just as a requirement for planning approval. I personally would like to see more data on the conditions of the units. And I understand that it's Catch-22, where increased rent helps the property owner to make the living situation for the tenants better. So chicken and the egg. That's it.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you, and really appreciated the opportunity here from the applicant and members of the public. This is obviously a challenging, you know, sort of thing that sits before us, and there are a lot of factors that we have to consider, which, you know, includes obviously fairness to the tenants, which is something that is a kind of an intended sort of component of the ordinance, and frankly, fairness to the property owner as well, and sort of the notion that a reasonable rate of return ought to redound to property owners. And that's really kind of the underpinning of the factors that we're asked to weigh here. I'm a little ambivalent candidly about sort of the notion of a subcommittee to inspect. It sounded like staff, you know, sort of got what staff believed was appropriate in connection with consideration of this factor, and prepared the report on the basis of information that was asked for from the applicant. Having said it, I'm not going to stand in the way of a continuance along those lines, if that's where the weight of the commission is. But again, it sounds like the applicant cooperated in the way that staff asked in connection with that. I did have a couple of thoughts or concerns about prevailing rents for similar units, a different factor from the one we were talking about. And I had taken a look at sort of the comparables that were included in the market rate housing report, that the rent survey, I guess. And it occurred to me that not every one of these 10 sort of comparables was really created equally. You know, I was in particular thinking that the ones up along Skyline, which is closer to where I live frankly, are probably better comps in a lot of ways, and the rent rates that are reflected, for example, in number three, which is Pacifica Park, or number six, Skyline Vista, or Fairmount Apartments on Imperial, or Eves Pacific up on Gateway, might be more comparable, and the rates there maybe ought to be sort of more significantly weighted. That's my own perspective than maybe some of the comps that are down closer to the ocean, which frankly probably generate and maybe justify higher rents owing to the more desirable locations for those particular complexes. And the thought occurred to me that I'd be interested in sort of knowing if we gave a greater level of weight to those, I'll call them skyline, sort of oriented projects, if we might end up with a different result. And the other thing that had sort of frankly occurred to me is I was looking at the rent roll, and I recognize it's a snapshot in time, and that it may not reflect currently where we are, but I didn't see a single rent that actually reflected the market rents that are sort of identified as kind of the weighted average market rents for Pacifica. Which, and I recognize that, you know, something like 50% of these units are currently occupied by folks who've been there for quite some time, but it strikes me as a little unusual if those are the prevailing market rents that, given that the property owners have the current ability to charge market rent when they enter into new leases, that none of the current rents appear to reflect those levels. So I think it's, it sort of calls into question frankly, the extent to which market, as identified, is really market for this particular, this particular complex. Don't really know where that leads, but thoughts that occur to me, and maybe worthy of a little further analysis.
Thank you very much. And now it's my turn to speak. One, I was here in 2008 when the condo conversion was done, along with Commissioner Campbell. And at that point in time, I remember it as being very eminent, and that there was a great deal of talk about getting all the units done, and making sure that the existing tenants had the opportunity to have the right of first refusal, on and on and on. There was much said to the condo conversion being an actual conversion to selling the existing units. So I just wanted that for history. In terms of the inspection, I was also one of the two commissioners that went out and inspected and came back with the report. And I am in favor of going back out and looking one more time, see what kinds of improvements have been made, and see if there's any areas that might need a little more improvement, before I decide whether or not I want to vote for an increase in rent. So I personally would be in favor of a continuance and the establishment of a subcommittee of, I would say, two would be appropriate, to go out and review the facilities.
Through the chair, I just wanted to make a few comments. So we can assist the So we can assist the commission facilitating the inspection. I do want to make sure that, I state this, so that expectations for both the commission and the audience are maintained in that this inspection, this site visit, is done by a subcommittee that will report back to help the full commission in making their determination about the general condition of the unit. This is not a, like, a building inspection report that's being done. So I just wanted to say that so that there's not going to be crawl spaces that are going to be inspected, we're not going on the roof, or anything like that. This is just kind of a general condition of the facility.
I'm not volunteering to go on anybody's roof.
Yeah. And I did want to also state that today we confirmed with the fire department that they did do their annual inspection last year and they passed. So I wanted that to be on the record for folks. And so that's all I wanted to clarify.
One other thing I wanted, I would want to add is that for the commission to realize that the only units we can inspect are those that we are actually invited into. We can't just go in and open somebody's door and walk through their unit. So if there are people here or people in the apartment complex that wish to allow us, it would be good for you to reach out to staff and they could get a list for us. And also, if the applicant has some units that are currently vacant, that they would be willing to have us look at, that would also be helpful. Okay? I have two lights on, and I believe it was Commissioner Nebelen that came up first.
It was actually Commissioner Berman, but...
Yeah, Commissioner Berman, then. I want to be fair.
Maybe I just have something, a request to add. If we do come back to this agenda item, if the staff report could be updated with the applicant's request in the applicant's letter, just for context, if they would like the above 12.5% increase. And then I'll pass it off to Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. I threw the chair then. I will also request, if we actually end up going in the direction of a continuance, I would like to get the most current possible rent roll from the applicant, just so I can have, so we as a commission can have as current information as possible about the rents that are actually being charged right now for units in the complex.
Commissioner Big Stick.
And again, I'm the new guy and I'm thorough. Mr. Keener rattled off a list of officials that he also recommended for checking into a thing. I'm curious if, in the commission's opinion, a subcommittee will do the job, or if any of that should be looked into. Also, I personally have nothing to say one way or the other, I just want to make sure that I turn over the stones.
I'm going to refer that to staff. I know we can set up a subcommittee, I don't know that we can request anybody else to come.
Right. I think this would be more appropriate to be just a subcommittee of the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm waiting for a motion.
And if I could request any motion that is made, if it is to continue with a subcommittee, that the two-person committee be identified.
I would be one of those because I have history with having already done an inspection, so I would actually be seeing, being able to see and identify improvements, if that's where the commission is willing to go. I believe it was Commissioner Big Stick again.
Yeah, I was ready to make the motion, but I don't know that I'm the right guy for the subcommittee. I'd be happy to, but if anyone else with more expertise would like to volunteer before I make a motion.
Commissioner Berman.
Not necessarily that I have more expertise, but I would be willing if no one else would like to.
We'll take you.
Okay.
All right. Now, we still need a motion to actually set up the subcommittee. We have the two people who are interested. All right. And I believe Commissioner Nebelen was the next light.
I think you're the, actually, I think Commissioner Big Stick had the light on and he was just, was interested in making a motion.
I'd be happy to, if you'd like. And I do think that a civil engineer probably has more to think about than a writer in this instance. So I'll be happy to make a motion to continue this until we have a subcommittee comprised of Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Clifford. Take a look.
And we will make that to a date unspecified, we will re-notice.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Craski.
Certain.
Now, I've got all kinds of light. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please vote? And that passes six with one absence. Want to note that Commissioner Rubenstein had to leave. He left approximately at 8:15. Okay, I'm going to just take those three off. All right. All right. And that item will be continued to a date uncertain because staff has to put that all together for us. So, thank you very much. And now, moving on to, moving on to item number three, S U B 241-18, file number 2018-47, tentative subdivision map, S U B 241-18, to subdivide a 6,964-square-foot parcel into two lots, one of being 5,550 square feet and the second one being 7,414 square feet at the corner of Marvilla Drive and Sheila Lane. Okay. I'm going to ask for a staff report, but I am also going to recuse myself from this My property is just the 1,000 mark, just touches the border of this particular item. And although I don't have to excuse myself or recuse myself, I am going to because of, it's just the best thing to do, there's no need for me to vote for it or against it. I'll just stay away. So could I have Commissioner Nebelen handle the chair?
I'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Oops. That's what I needed to do.
Are you going to come back when the item's done? Thank you. If we could get a staff report on this item, please.
Good evening again, Commissioners Helen Gannon, project planner. So the subject application is for the subdivision of an existing 60,964-square-foot parcel located at the corner of Sheila Lane and Malavir Drive into two lots of 53,550 square feet and one of 7,414 square feet. In its current state, the parcel consists of multiple zoning designations, R1, which is single-family, and A/B5 overlay, and contains a single-family home with a detached accessory dwelling unit. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the parcel into two lots, which will be separated at the delineation of the two existing zoning designations, where each parcel will then contain one single-family residence. The existing detached ADU would become the primary dwelling unit on the R1-zoned lot and has been conditioned to comply with the minimum floor area requirement for a primary dwelling unit. There's no development being proposed with this application, and the existing structures on the property have each been reviewed against the respective zoning standards for compliance. Development exists on the adjacent parcels, which range in size from 5,000 square feet to 54,384 square feet, which is consistent with the proposed development pattern and intensity of the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends planning commission approval of the subdivision subject to the conditions of approval included in the attachment, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Gannon?
I had one question. You made reference to a lawsuit, neighbor is concerned about Pacifica versus City Council of Pacifica. Just curious what that suit was about.
I don't have the full details. I believe there was some question about the adequacy of the environmental review. It's my rough recollection, given the settlement that was reached in terms of detention pond that was designed into the subdivision improvements and some easements that were placed on the upper limits of the slopes to the west. I believe those were some of the issues that were part of the settlement of that lawsuit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Big Stick.
Mine is more of a clarification question, because when I was visiting the property, I was looking at it, and I was very, very confused, until finally I got home and I reviewed the map again. And my understanding is, the little space on the bottom where the ponds are is the ADU, isn't it?
Correct. Where the pond is, is the same parcel that the ADU is currently located on.
I was very confused because, again, I'm unfamiliar with this area, and I figured they were just two separate lots, two separate housing units.
Correct. It is one parcel currently, but as proposed, the pond would be on the same property as the ADU, then turning into the primary residence of that lot.
And interestingly, the zoning map, for whatever reason, has that corner at Sheila Lane and Malavir designated as R1, single-family residential, and the balance of the parcel zoned as agriculture/B5 lot-size overlay.
So that ADU is only 844 square foot, then, if I'm reading that correctly?
Correct. And that's where, city standards, you need to have at least 850 square feet to be considered a primary dwelling unit, and so that has been included as a condition.
I had reference in the staff report that six feet would seem negligible, and I would tend to agree. When I looked at it initially, I saw a house, but one of the conditions for approval is adding on six feet, six square foot of, so, very curious, how does one add six foot into a thing that's already there?
Yes. I don't have that answer. We have discussed with the designer, and it may be challenging, but unfortunately, the standards do call for 850. So whether it's six feet or another 20 to 100 square feet that they'd like to add, that's up to them.
And given that the term negligible is being used, is it required that we have that as a condition of approval, or what's the benefits of keeping that as a condition of approval versus doing an exception if such a thing is possible, and is such a thing possible?
So I'm not aware of any exceptions that we could apply, except for possibly a variance that would require to prove hardship, and so that would be up to the applicant to prove that for us. And we would need to also make that finding. It has been included as a condition because, like I said, that is our, those are the regulations, and so that is what we need to follow.
Very good. I'm looking forward to seeing how they improve upon it. It's already a very beautiful site.
Thank you, Ms. Gannon. I don't see any other questions at this point, so I'm going to go ahead and invite the applicant up to share with us anything the applicant cares to.
Good evening. I started this project in 2006. At the time, it was like the best interest of my family to have a main house and an in-law. Over time, things changed a little bit, so for the best interest of my family, I'm trying to separate it. And to answer your question, I did find six square feet where I could add on to the house, a little extra closet in the master bedroom, doesn't take any garage space that needs to be accounted for. Other than that, I appreciate it, and if you have any questions, I'll answer for you.
Okay. Well, I don't see any questions at this point, so I'll let you know if any come up. Thank you. This is the portion of the hearing where we would hear from the public if there were, in fact, any speaker cards, none of which I have. So I guess then that we can also forego the portion of the hearing where we would have the applicant come up and comment on any comments that we got. So that means that we can bring the matter back to the commission for discussion. So I've closed the public hearing, and we're doing that now. Any discussion at this point? Commissioner Big Stick.
Like I said, it's all quite lovely and everything seemed to be in order once I figured out what I was looking at, and I'm happy to make a motion if and when appropriate to do so.
All right. Well, we'll put a tack in that for a second, see if anybody else has any other comments to make. And I don't see any, so I guess we can untack it. If you've got a mushy one to make, go ahead and make it.
I will move that the planning commission finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the tentative subdivision map, S U B-241-18, by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and three, incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Berman.
I second the motion.
Okay. Well, we've had a motion, a second. Why don't we go ahead and vote? Well, I voted on Commissioner Clifford's button there, but I want to reflect that Commissioner Clifford recused... unanimously passed by all commissioners present. Thank you. That then was our last new public hearing. That takes us to communications. Are there any commission communications? Commissioner Big Stick.
Sure. I just wanted to check in that I went to that last Home For All meeting, which, again, was a wide success. There were many, many new people at the second meeting that were not at the first meeting. There was more topic matter discussed that wasn't discussed at the first meeting, including feedback from the public in which they were discussing the direction they'd like the city to start going in terms of figuring out what affordable housing solutions might be. Food was good, chicken pasta was nice.
Nice. Excellent. Well, thanks for going. Any other commission communications? Seeing none, I'll ask for any staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. On June 28th, the city council, excuse me, the city council recently approved the library's conceptual design plan. They received a voter survey update which showed improved support for a library project, and council directed staff to do additional community outreach and resurvey later this year. Additionally, as Commissioner Big Stick mentioned, we had a very nice Home For All meeting on May 21st. More than 90 residents came. We were the only city of the participating cities in the county's Home For All program thus far that had increased attendance at its second meeting, so we're very proud of that. We thank our community and our partners for interest, and we have to credit the many staff that helped with getting the word out. So thank you to everybody. We're hopeful that that energy and interest in housing and being involved in planning for our community in the future will carry forward into our general plan, local coastal program, and Sharp Park-specific planning processes. And to help get the word out and keep the community informed, we've launched a specific website for those activities called planpacifica.org, P-L-A-N-P-A-C-I-F-I-C-A.org. And it's a standalone website, which will have information about the general plan update, the local coastal program update, and the new Sharp Park-specific plan processes, as well as the upcoming community meeting dates, once those are finalized with the locations and times. So contact information for staff is also on that site, but anybody with questions can reach out to me at the Planning Department as well.
Excellent. Please, go ahead.
Did the city have any official position on Senate Bill 50 at the end of the day?
I am not aware if we sent a comment letter on the legislation.
Okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Well, just really fantastic to hear about all that community engagement. It's super important. Well, all that said, it looks like a motion to adjourn would be in order. So I'll ask for such a motion. Commissioner Craski.
I second that motion.
I'm going to have you down as the moving party, and I'll ask for a second. Commissioner Campbell. No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Berman.
I second the motion.
Motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Again, we unanimously voted to adjourn. Thanks.